Okay, football presentation, Coach Marshall. What is it?
Coach Marshall's at tryouts right now. He's so... Yeah, I just, I guarantee he has so many kids down there, he's running late.
Effectively. But he is being recognized, is he not? Could you please...
I won't be careful.
But do you, do you know what he's being recognized for?
I don't.
Is he getting an award or being recognized for something?
I thought he was bringing something.
He's bringing something to you guys!
He was...
Yeah, but I thought there's an organization that's going to be recognizing him as a football coach.
There's another organization, Omega Society, just recognizing him on Saturday for his work, his outstanding work with the youth in the community. That's on Saturday.
That's one of the doors about him that I think he's the only, personally the second year that does, he's a senior recipient. It'd be nice for everybody to hear that.
Yeah.
This was his presentation to you.
Okay, we'll come back to that one. So next would be buildings and grounds and finance, Mr. Irons.
We just wrapped up the meeting a little bit ago. Present was myself, Pat Nelson, Carol, Melissa, Jeff, and John McGowell. We discussed the C K One Village and congratulations and kudos to everybody that's been the hard work to get this passed. We discussed several things about it. One of the big things that we really put emphasis on is prioritizing our needs versus our wants. I think that's something that's going to be key in getting out to the public in recognition of this, to explain to them what we plan to do with these funds. It's not just going to be, there's a bunch of funds and everybody's got free for all. It's going to be well planned and devised by needs and wants. So I think it was a, it was a great discussion we all had. Obviously, there's a lot of needs and the biggest needs are, a lot of our buildings are in disarray, so that was that topic. The next topic was our student enrollment. We finally got our numbers, our official numbers. We budgeted for fourteen sixty-three. Our final numbers were fifteen twenty-eight, so that put us sixty-five students over what we budgeted for, which again is an awesome, awesome increase. Next thing, we talked about the M D E audit. Melissa gave us some great news. The M D E audit went pretty, very well. In two thousand fifteen, we got hit with a hundred thousand dollar reduction. Basically, they took a hundred thousand away from our M D budget. We made great strides and this year, they are projecting to take twenty thousand, but she's going to contest that, so hopefully we'll end up with even less than all of it. The other topic was an outstanding grievance that was, was agreed to make go away. It was, basically it wasn't really a grievance, it was more of a misunderstanding. We had teachers that were due funds for their classifieds that they haven't been giving it, and it was just kind of overlooked that it took place and more than a, it wasn't really a collect, it was just overlooked at all parties, so that got taken care of. Jeff then went through the building and grounds update, and again, he went into a little more detail on what the buildings need and went over some critical issues that we need to look at. Basically, the roofs, it sounds like the high school roof is number one priority right now. It's several weeks, and the roof is pretty much at its, it's at its peak. So that will be probably one of the first things we will do. He's getting budgets together right now for, we'll get, replacing versus repair. And then, last on the topic, Carol talked about the ISB village that is being discussed right now, which is to prioritize them a little bit for the ISB and C K One. So then, we adjourned on five forty. Oh, I'm sorry. The other thing that we did discuss was Melissa's unwillingness to participate in another year after this year. Tried to get Melissa to stick around for one more year, but she just doesn't want to do it, so we will be...
Not in the role as a consultant.
She will consider consulting, but she does not want to be a CFO, so... So she is suggesting that we post for a full-time position. We do not need a recommendation to come out about this, it's just a job posting. And that was it.
Any questions? All right, Coach, I see you back there. Hi.
How you doing?
Good.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all. You wanted to come in tonight to present something to the board and tell you guys, thank you for all the support for the hard season and the long season, coming out every Friday night in the cove, in the rain, and supporting us, myself as well as the kids, and we got a token appreciation from us of you guys and from signed by all of the coaches and the players that you want to dedicate this to the board.
Oh, very nice.
Couple things real quick, can you hear Houston Youngman with you?
Yes, this is Charles Gary, this is our quarterback. This is Mark Hill, Gary, our wide receiver in safety. This is Kentay Parker, a wide receiver and defensive back. And this is Bobby Martin, our sophomore center.
I can tell you we're proud of you guys. You not only did well, but you represented your school well. You were leaders, and I think that's really, really important. I know a lot of people in our communities where we play, and more so than ever this year, I've heard about, we're a good team, and we're not just because of your love and the play, but your character. So thank you for that. Really appreciate it, we're proud of you.
I'd like to, I'd like to just say, I was at several games, and I was at three away games, and I can honestly tell you that the atmosphere this year is totally different than any year. I've been to football games since my son was in school. I can tell you, your leadership definitely shows in these boys.
I appreciate it.
And the smiles on their face, when they lost that game, their final game this year, they didn't look at it as a loss. They still won. When Charles got hurt, shortly after that, there was an altercation on the field. And Markel, Markel, stop for a minute. This young man showed leadership in the team, and during that altercation, you went and grabbed your teammate and said, "We don't do that here." I commend you for that. That is leadership. That is strong leadership from the junior, correct? You're a junior? That's strong leadership. That leadership came from your coach, and that definitely shows through. We respect that. Definitely respect you for that, and you know, grabbing your teammate and saying, "Hey, calm down, we don't do that here." And you walked him right off the field, took him away from the altercation, blocked him off the field saying, "We don't do that here." Congratulations to you. That's what, that's what I go with.
You received some recognition for your work with these men, are you not?
Yes, this Saturday, I was invited by the Omega Society fraternity as man of the year for community service working.
I'd like to say something too, because my son plays football at Delta, and I sat through a lot of games in the rain and all, and I said, "I ain't going to no more football games," and took care of anybody, but I guess once you're a football mom, you know, once you get out there, you start rooting for your team, it's just kind of in your blood, and so I'd like to congratulate all of you too, and just ask, have you thought about the colleges you're going to yet?
I've been thinking about a couple of schools, but I'm not saying that.
So how many of you are leaving us? How many will not be with us next year? Okay, two.
How many of the whole team?
We're losing twelve out of the thirty-nine.
Oh, wow.
So we'll be there.
So twelve, but most of them will remain, and I know under your leadership, they will continue to be rich, strong. I'm so excited about next year and what we can do, because you showed that we have so much possibility.
Yes, absolutely.
And Coach, I would like to say one other thing. When I was at Army Health Teaching, Jim York was the coach at that time. He was a great coach, as you know, he's been recognized at the San Antonio Hall of Fame. He reminds me so much of him, and that was one of the reasons I wanted my son to play on that team was because of his development of leadership of his team, and so I see that in himself.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Congratulations to you, an awesome year. You guys have a great...
I have basketball. Bobby Martin's an honor road student too, isn't he? All right. Okay, so now we have middle school and high school data presentation. Who's up?
Just to look how well these did, get them a pointer, you need a role out of here. So can you see the little fuzzy here, or is that just my eyesight?
You want me to turn now, right now, or bring it on?
Sure.
Right now, right.
Yeah. No, I think that's the fan, it's the other one, it's the one you're closer to. All right, so a couple of things as we go through, and certainly we look at our data, and there's a lot of things as we look at, and I almost wish I had a laser pointer, but so here is in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. This is our S A T, P S A T data. Right below it is our two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen P S A data. Does anyone know why we don't have fourteen fifteen? I don't, don't you get it when teachers ask a question, they're going to answer it? We switched over.
Yeah.
We switched over. We're at the A C T at that point. So this is why our data doesn't go back any further. Again, the S A T and A C T is, you know, I don't want to say the apples and oranges, it really is two different games. It is football and basketball, of what they're looking at, what the focus is, and where the focus needs to be. And again, to win the game, you got to know the rules, and now we, the rules are certainly with the S A T. So in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, there's a couple of ways to certainly look at this. So the class, that graduating class that is now seniors, in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, their reading score was at twenty percent, so as they moved up a year, that's what I want you to compare to. All right, so don't look and try to compare where we are like this to this, because that is apples to oranges. Again, it's not the same kids. You want to see where we are, where there's growth, where we're moving, all right? So our graduation, this group right here, their mean was seven sixty-six. We were able to get them and move them to eight forty-six, okay? So keep that in mind. Again, is that awesome numbers? We're at twenty percent, we're at five percent, but you see that we moved them a whole sixty points. It's the same thing with this group. We're at seven fifteen was our mean, we moved them to seven eighty-two. You know, again, only, you know, five percent to six percent, it's not like this is unbelievable, you know, growth there, but we are moving, we are moving the kids. And you certainly see that as we continue through our data. And again, all that matters to us in the high school is the S A T, okay? And as we go through, there are some things that we're doing. So what are we doing? First thing, we aligned our curriculum to power standards. Again, we were playing under a different set of rules. You know, I always say that to the staff, and I wish Becca was here, but you know, is it okay in sports to hit somebody in the face?
No.
All of them. I just saw a couple of people make almost a billion dollars punch in each other in the face. Mayweather and McGregor. The answer is, you got to know the rules to win. So if you're going to do that while somebody's shooting a free throw, no, it's not okay. And Deb's, he's absolutely right. But you got to know the rules to win. So one of the things we've had to do is align our curriculum to power standards. We've had to align our curriculum to what the S A T is looking for. And so what do we do? I have the world's greatest assistant principal in Tiffany Collins, and her and I, we look at lesson plans that are turned in on a weekly basis through Plan Book, which has really helped our teachers, because right through Plan Book, they click right on the standards, right on the benchmarks, we can make sure that what they're teaching, and again, it takes us being active within the classrooms, and it certainly is no doubt that people like Coach Marshall allow us to be successful, and is a huge part of our success in the halls. You want to talk about him out there in the football field, him in the school is even better. And again, so it allows us, Tiffany and I, to check on lesson plans and be active participants in the classroom, monitoring what they're doing, to make sure that what they're putting on the lesson plan isn't just a song and dance. I kindly say that for years teaching in this building, you know, you were just, I was always in the control of just my four walls, my four walls, and then as principal, you expand. Same concepts, now I expand, and when it was in your four walls, you hoped that everybody else was taking care of those four walls. I always believed there was an attitude of people, you know, were doing that, but it was a lot of song and dance. And you see that, that we're making sure that people aren't just song and dancing, that we're seeing what we need to do. So with this, is we've then focused on S A T prep. And one of the things that we've had to do is redesign the math sequencing, because again, the A C T was focused very much on geometry. Really was a lot of geometry on the A C T, okay? The S A T is all linear equations. It is all reading comprehension as far as the English and vocabulary, so we've had to redesign that, and for math, it is linear equation. So what did we do? We totally reinvented our sequencing. We now have our kids that are coming in, if they're behind in math, we're not pushing them into algebra, we're putting them in pre-algebra. Learning algebraic equations, pretty much linear equations, linear equations, then we go to algebra. Then from algebra, we go to algebra two, and then we put geometry on the end as for seniors, okay? We want to get the focus, again, on the S A T. Before, it was algebra, geometry, algebra two, then personal finance. So now, we've kind of taken personal finance out. We still have that bubble that we have to work through, if you can vision that with our scheduling. So we set up personal finance for those senior kids that had a finish this year, but now it's pre-algebra, algebra, algebra two, then geometry. Obviously, our high-end kids, we start with algebra, okay, we go algebra two, pre-count, geometry. With me? Not going too fast.
So is this personal finance now an elective versus is it still a math elective?
Well, here's the thing, it is for us, our working through that bubble, our senior kids now, the state said you had to have four years of math, okay? And three of them had to be algebra, algebra two, and geometry. You still have to have those. So that fourth year was either, you know, going to be pre-count, or for the lower kids, it was personal finance, the kids that struggled in math. So what we decided to do is we said, "Why are we putting this here? Our kids are struggling, let's get pre-algebra. If it can be any class we want, we got to get them in linear equations, and we got to get the fundamentals for, they're not going to get it." You know, when I had kids in social studies class, if a kid maybe wasn't paying attention on the nineteen twenties, I could still get him to pass World War Two. It was a little harder. It was a little harder. It certainly makes sense that you have that knowledge of the nineteen twenties, but I could still get you to pass the World War Two unit. Math doesn't work that way. If you can't, if you're not, if you're not understanding fractions, I can't get you to the next lesson, and Mrs. You, Mrs. Holy Ghost, all too well. So again, so what else are we doing? We put in A P programs, Project Lead the Way, to work with our top end kids. N H S is tutoring. We have an advisory program where we get tutoring there. N H S stays active, but in our advisory, that's where our students go, and they go to different teachers, and they get tutoring and help right there in the morning and that extra enrichment. So we redesigned our schedule and what we're doing. And then Compass Learning, and you're going to hear I'm a big fan of Compass Learning, love Compass Learning, you guys like it down there too. It is a great tool, but we don't have enough computers, okay? We don't. And so with our Compass Learning, we aren't a one-to-one technical school, so the only Compass Learning we really have, because we are limited, we then focus on the juniors. Obviously, why the juniors? Very good. You guys are so smart. But what more can we do? Again, right, it's always about growing, it's always about moving up that mountain, we're not going to be satisfied. So first thing, I need, we need more frequent Compass Learning for all. Big fan of it, but I'm limited, you know, and so since certainly it's my limitations, and as a principal, I can't then, we can't, I'm holding staff back, so what I got to do is I got to push, and so what we need to do then is obviously get our kids more on that Compass Learning, because from that N W E A scores and that testing, it matches exactly where our kids are and then progresses them forward. It's really an amazing tool. It really is. And so they're tied together. Compass Learning and N W E A, that testing is tied together. But again, N W E A, I don't want to say it's meaningless to us, but it's, because it's not, it's a tool to help, but again, what's the thing that we're all focused about in the high school? What is it? The S A T, okay? So the N W E A is a factor in helping us build, but again, at the end of the day, it's the S A T that matters. So Compass Learning works with N W E A, which then will help us with the S A T, but we need more. We need more, and we need to get that more one-to-one usage, and we have that. So what else would I like to do? What else, more can we do? Create an eighth hour program. Again, you got to get kids learning more. So what I'd like to do is enrichment after school. Get those struggling learners, and we have a whole bunch of them, but to get them after school, and I would take it as an eighth hour. It's mandatory. If you're testing at this level, you need more remediation, you need more enrichment. There isn't going to be a parent alive that isn't going to sit there and say, "Please teach my kid more," you know? And if they do, then we'll find other kids that can fill the program, but we would like to, I would like to add that enrichment after school, where we have an eighth hour, where then the kids are getting more. Look, the only way you can get better at math, I'm not that smart of a person, but it's do more math, you know? And we have a, and again, you could be upset at the way the winds are blowing, but the winds in our community blow in a certain way, where our kids struggle with homework, or our kids have legitimate concerns once they leave this school. So I don't want them to leave the school, you know? I want them to be here as much as possible so we can teach them. You know, I know I talk fast sometimes, but I, is this making sense? I hope so. I hope you guys can feel the vision of what we're doing here. So, you know, what more can we do? I know we got to put the union on this one, but you know, more instructional days is something, again, as we go through, and that's pretty much, I guess it gets dark in here real quick.
Want to like Becca?
Yes. So I did not want to take too much time and too long, but I think as I, what more can we do? Again, it's like I tell the staff all the time, don't give me more problems, it's what are solutions? There's always solutions and ways to go. So that way we have the magic wand. So any questions about some of our data, where we're at, what we can do, what we're hoping to do?
I just want to add, in December, it looks like, we will have some individual staff members come in and help talk to you about some of the individual things that they're doing in their departments and their programs.
Yes.
Like him, Mr. Kim will come and talk about five or six.
Yes. And we can bring in, we can certainly bring in people and talk about how we have A T across the curriculum, and we can certainly talk about the benefits of Compass Learning and these kind of things, but again, and I'm telling you, we have a staff that would be willing to stay after and work with kids. And that probably wasn't always the case, you know, two, three years ago, but we have that now, so we have an opportunity to continue to move this school forward. So, yes.
I think you're at a good point at this point to incorporate a mentorship program.
One of the things that we've done, in fact, when we brought the eighty-three football team back, it's one of the things that they talked about is mentorship, mentorship, mentorship. So one of the things we've tried to do is within our staff, because you see all the research and the benefits of mentorship, but we don't necessarily have like always people beating down our doors for mentorship, so what we did within our advisory is we've assigned teachers to be mentors to these certain group of kids, and you were with that group of kids then for four years. So you build relationships, you build bonds, and the way we talk about it in the staff meetings is that, these are the kids, you better be invited to the graduation party, you know, and you got to take ownership of them graduating, and you're going to be a mentor to them. And so that way, you're not, you can't get all, you know, one-fifty of your kids, right? That's a lot of kids, you know, you can just teach what you can teach and do your role, but if I get you to take people over twenty, and you have them for four years, and you become that mentor, and you know, we also try to mix with personalities as far as that goes too, because not everyone's going to catch everyone. I'm not for everybody. Not everyone's going to like my personality and who I am, and that's okay, that's good. You don't want to have people that all look alike and sound alike, you want to find somebody that's going to fill in your gaps, and that way, you can catch kids, as many kids as possible. And still doing that, unfortunately, we don't. You know, I wish we did. And that's certainly our goal, is to have that perfection, don't ever think that's not our goal, but you know, there are kids that unfortunately need those.
I asked that question because I have a vision of a mentorship program that would incorporate people from the building who are retired scientists from Dow, people from next year.
Yes. We have an opportunity, it's built within our schedule in that first hour advisory, and we have that time in there for people to come in and work with that. So please, and that's why I said I also would like to extend the day to eighth hour to, you know, to do that even more, because the benefits of that are, you see that. You know, you look at so many kids, and it's like, why did certain kids become successful and they've come through hardships, and what they've looked and researched was that they had somebody that cared about them.
I haven't discussed it with the board, but that is something I think we need to track also, because I have some ideas, because I think all of us know people who could do that.
We're not going to turn anybody away here at the high school, just know that.
I've spoken to a couple of my friends already, retired from Dow, and they haven't said they are rushing over here, but they said they would, they have done this before, and they have said that they will share information.
Seven forty-five, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. You know, we have advisory. That's the one hour that gets cut out on our late start Wednesdays, which we've seen a lot of benefits to that. We really have, that's been, that's been an overall good thing. You know, we've made adjustments, and I think the community has made adjustments, and you're seeing a lot of, you know, benefits from that.
Do we have someone from the ISB that works with you on mentorship, gives you area assistance?
Not really, not, not really, I can't think of it. But I'm sure you're going to have information if you were having something specific, and I do know, or at least I did know, of a program at Dow where they came out and mentored, I think high school, I know they were mentoring middle school students, and I shared their information last year, Mr. Baker, I'm not sure if they weren't able to come out, because they, I know they're pretty busy in some other school districts, but I'm sure there's information out there on organization that I mentor our kids.
Kathy's going to be here at the next board meeting, so you can ask her there. So I yield much...
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I think we'll take much up next.
Better.
Mr. Chapman, you were...
I'm not on the agenda.
Yeah, you are.
So I broke down the data in two different ways. You're going to see the first three pages, which is the class two thousand twenty-three, class of two thousand twenty-two, and class two thousand twenty-one. Those are tracking actual students for three years for the time set class time. So tracking them from fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, it's the same... is the same group of students with the exception of adds or withdrawals. I did not break it down into just a, a smaller group that has been in there, those continuous three years. So when you do take out some, some of the students that have withdrawn or added, it does change the data just slightly. But this should be adequate to see some trends in, in student growth. And if you look at the graphs that I've created for you, you'll see graphs for ELA for the class of two thousand twenty-three and then also for math. I've incorporated down in the bottom